You want to put your masks on, please? I fly allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, welcome everyone. Thanks for attending. Go ahead and start with approving the agenda. Are any changes to the agenda? There is item F. We need to accept the resignation.
It's Patty Baron?
Yep, there's a handout Friday tonight. Patty Baron will be retiring next year. And then under item 10C, we'll strike 10C, the one-year contract. And then under executive session, we will strike student matter and replace it with personnel. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, with those additions, those changes, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Move back by only a second by lay should approve the agenda with those changes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest or disclosures, waivers, requests? Hearing none, we'll approve the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is to approve the minutes, accept the financial reports, approve claims, those without conflicts of interest, accepted donation, declare book surplus, and accept the resignation. Hearing those, does anyone want any of these items removed from the consent agenda? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So move Craig.
Move by Paul, second by Niebel to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next is our correspondence, our public commentary. I'd like to ask if, for those that are here in the audience tonight, if it's anything other than the mask mandate, we'll take that now. We do have mask mandate on the agenda under information coming up. So is anyone here for anything other than mask? No? All right, before we continue on, I want to just recognize that we have Patrick Mykonin?
Mykonin.
Mykonin, Mykonin. He's going to be our new superintendent after Shane McIntosh here retires. So for some of our guests, I just want to introduce our future superintendent. All right, next is our good news item. So we will ask our principals to come forward to talk good news.
All right, I got a couple. One of them is we took our NCRC test. That's the test for career readiness. National Career Readiness Survey. And we did extremely well. They basically rank them. We get four different medal placements, so to speak, where else you don't qualify. Twenty percent of our kids that took it had platinum, which is the top. Twenty-five percent had gold, or forty-five percent had silver, and we only had five percent that were below that. So extremely well again. It bodes well for where they're headed and so on. And this is the one that you can actually use outside of just education. Some businesses and so on recognize that as a way to get employability. Then we also had the FFA go out today. They came back, did extremely well. We had six teams placed in the top 10. Our milk quality and products team got first, poultry evaluation got second, flora culture got fourth, nursery landscaping got fifth, food science got seventh, and meat evaluation got eighth. Fourteen students placed in the top 20. So I would go through each of those values to give us the Craig. It'll make life easier. There's a lot of kids, and they all did a great job. Ms. Ackerman came back, just overjoyed. That was their first event that they went to this year, so.
That is good.
There we go.
Thank you.
On the activity side, Porter Negabauer State Wrestling, he finished fourth individually. And then London Sudbeck got seventh overall in the gymnastics state, which was great. So I'd like to recognize those two. And then also elementary student Hadley Digman, her art, her flag design was chosen. So that'll get made into a flag for the South Dakota Arts Council. And the theme this year is how art connects us. So that'll be hanging in our MPR here once that gets printed enough. So congratulations to Hadley.
Nice, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to information and discussion under staff reports.
I'll just kind of keep rolling here. Wind it down with our winter seasons. All our winter seasons are complete. We had, I'm just, again, each season, I'm very glad to be up here talking about that we completed it. Had, like I said, our coaches did a wonderful job of just all the mitigation practices, and we were able to finish up. So congratulations to all those teams. We have track and golf starting here in the next couple of weeks. So we'll kind of be winding up our last run here. We are hosting a Sodak 16 game tomorrow night. So if you're bored, you can come on out. I think Del Rapids and Rapid City Christian, yep, are coming here too. So you can come on out and check that out. On the, on my elementary principal side, just letting you know, we have preschool and kindergarten screening. That'll be coming up at the end of April. So we'll be setting those dates as we go. Right now, teachers will be working on class lists, kind of getting everything ramped up. And then requisitions just came out also. So kind of really getting ready and geared up for the following years. We'll start taking care of our March Madness, as we call it here. So that's all I have unless there's any other questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Yost? Thank you.
Thank you.
As far as the high school junior high goes, we are ending our semester, nine weeks here on the 11th. So at the end of this week will be the end of the nine weeks. So we're kind of wrapping that up, doing well there. One thing you're going to start hearing, one of our FCC layers is, for her project, she's starting a food bank, basically for the school, for our students that are here. If you notice, as you go down the hallway, there's a can drive right now and some hygiene drive. So some of those students have a place here where they can grab a few things on their way out the door if they need them for themselves. It's still kind of in the design stages. We have a couple of staff that will kind of be in charge of running it with that student. But I think it's a great thing for them to get started and, you know, so you'll be hearing stuff about that. That's a really good thing we've got getting started here. And then now we're starting to get into that springtime where we got prom coming up and everything else. So we're rolling forward with everything we're doing there, so.
Great, thank you. And we're still planning on having a live prom, right?
Yep.
Okay, sounds great.
All right.
Thank you. Shane?
We've been working on staffing. We had reopen the instrumental music position, and I don't know, that's been open for another week now or 10 days. I'm not sure how long it's been open, but we are getting some interest, so that's good to see. Our principal applications, we received 13 applicants for our elementary principal activities director position. So that was a good number to see as well. Some really good candidates in that pool. COVID, of course, is leading, the leading topic again this month. I put together a committee of staff, primarily teachers from every school, from the colony, our home elementary and high school. And we're going to sit down and we're going to talk about interventions that we can take to help students with learning loss. One of the components of the stimulus bill that's in Congress right now is that 20% of those dollars will need to be expended on students with learning loss. So identifying those students and then finding ways to make interventions to help them come back to speed. So again, we got a committee together that's meeting, is it this week? This Wednesday, to start talking about ideas and concepts to do it. The problem, of course, is that money's limited and it runs out after two or three years. So, you know, it's going to be a short-term plan, but I think we can make some nice inroads there. The other thing that's been taken quite a bit, just trying to prepare for the principal interviews, lining up everything that's needed. So we've got that coming up a week from today. Of course, we're tracking the legislature homeschool bill that went through. That'll be interesting to watch in the next couple of years as that progresses and we see students going through the program. It allows students to participate in co-curriculars, which we've always done. We have a couple requirements of them, trying to keep the grades even. But we'll probably have to relook at that policy now that this legislation passed because I don't think we can have any requirements of homeschool students. They don't have to prove their grades or anything. So we'll have to rework our policy, or you will. The other thing, then, the funding bills are all this week. So they're all still looking. 2.4% increase next year for our general fund. And then there's some one-time dollars as well that's in the budget or in the legislation. And that's about $65,000 for our districts. So it's tracking those this week.
Great.
Do those have strings, Shane?
No, no, no. Just general fund. I spent them in the general fund. That's the only string, so that's good.
Are there any questions for Mr. McIntosh? All right, we'll go, move on to item B under information, which is the mask mandate.
Do you want to talk about the plan first, or how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, let's go ahead and talk about, well, let's go ahead and let's open it up. Right now, we have a mask mandate in place. So do you two have masks with you?
No, sure don't.
Okay, you want to go ahead and, is there masks in the?
I can grab some, yeah.
Yep, go ahead and grab them. I'll have you step out until we get your masks on. It's mandated in the building? JD?
Yeah.
It's mandated in the building right now.
I'll wait for my mask to come here.
Okay.
You want me to go over this while we're waiting?
Yep, we'll go ahead and we'll have Mr. McIntosh go ahead and go over our mandate policy.
So actually, this is the plan. Last month, the board directed us to develop a plan. And I call it the plan to remove masks or loosen restrictions on masks, however you want to say it. So I bring this tonight, and this is what we're, this is what I'm recommending the board do. So in the last, I don't know, last three months, I don't know that we've had any cases amongst students. We've had one case that occurred over New Year's with a staff member. We had a substitute teacher that had COVID, but again, we don't believe that was school-related. Today, Hutchinson County went from moderate community spread to minimal community spread. I think there's 12 active cases in the state. So what this plan does is it articulates a plan to loosen restrictions and primarily for pre-K through sixth grade, the elementary school. We would go back to the, I'll call it the pod concept, but it's how we started the school year. So our individual units are obviously isolated and separated, each classes. So in the classroom, students would be allowed to take the masks off and go about their learning. When they leave that classroom, however, they would be required to mask up as they travel through the halls and encounter other students from other classrooms. That would pertain to the lunchroom, to the best of the ability that we can distance in there and keep them separate. And I'm sure you guys have read this, so I don't have to go through it detail by detail. One thing that we encountered last fall was the number of students we were placing into quarantine. And that got to be fairly significant at times. And I, and when we looked at student to student spread, we felt there was one or two, I don't know if principals could help me, one or two incidents where that may have occurred. Otherwise, all of the others, we didn't see those kids in quarantine actually becoming positive. So with that, the plan says if a student in one of those elementary classrooms does become positive, we're not going to send all the others home for quarantine. But we are going to require them to mask during that quarantine period. So they'll be coming to school, but they'll be masked. Once the quarantine period's over, goes back to the way it was before. There are some additional options, and these were changes that were made by the CDC regarding options to reduce quarantine. One of those I just mentioned. There is one, I did bold this because this is important. We're talking about contact between student and student in classroom where there's usually some distance between them. If a student, however, takes a five-hour car ride with someone going to Rapid City, and that's how they become positive, I think we should probably exclude that child from school. Even, it's just, well, we're going to exclude them anyway. If they were a close contact in a vehicle, is what I should have said. Their close contact in a vehicle with someone who was positive, I think depending upon that situation, we may have left to keep them home. Just because the exposure was so great and so confined and limited ventilation. Seven for 12, seventh grade through 12th grade, I've got, I got, I kind of sat on the fence here. You're going to see an O. I've got kind of two plans or two thoughts. Again, doing much like we started the school year, students will be wearing masks in the halls, in the buses, in the lunchroom where practical or where they cannot social distance. If they're able to social distance, they can take their masks off. Now, there are certain classes where that probably won't be possible, some of your larger English classes and things like that. But there are other classes where that would be possible. And then we would also encourage staff to create seating arrangements that would allow for the maximum ability to allow for, allow for that. One of the things, and you guys got the survey today, and this copy's on the table if you haven't seen it. You know, the high school parents were a little more, were less, I don't know how to say this. I think they have more concern about what potential consequences COVID in the high school means versus maybe the elementary. The consequences of missing activities, missing prom, you know, we've got FFA going, FCC LA going, we've got FB LA going, we've got music going, we've got track starting, golf will be, so there's going to be plenty of activities that, and I think they learned from football season that they don't, they don't want to miss that. So, and especially, I think, the two big ones, prom and graduation are nervous for parents. They just don't want their children to meet that. And that might reflect why the vote was a little more even in that area. Or that's what I think anyway. Otherwise, if you've seen these, anybody have any questions, or on what this looks like? I'm not quite sure that question three, I didn't follow the answer and the logic behind some of those answers for question three. I'm not sure a high school parent who would indicate that they want to keep masks the way they currently are. So the high school voted 24 to 16 to keep it that way. But then in number three, where it says, do you support loosening it for sixth grade and keeping it for 7th, 12th, the junior high high school parents said no. Now, either they don't want it loosened for sixth grade or preschool through sixth grade, or they didn't quite fully understand the question. I didn't expect to see those results, but it is what it is. Anyway, with 7th through 12th, again, you know, what we've heard in previous months is trying to find some ways to loosen up some of these things for these kids. And I think this plan does it. The difference between the first part and the second part of 7th through 12th is primarily the social distancing component. Six feet of social distancing versus the best of their ability. You know, you can read something new every day about COVID. And one of the things I read today is social distancing, while important, ventilation is more important. So just something to keep in mind. You know, we do pull in as much fresh air as possible. We had to back that down just a little bit during that cold week. But other than that, they've been pulling in fresh air at 100% throughout the school year. And I think our utility bills show it, but it's the cost of doing business.
Discuss the medical letter?
Yeah, yeah. I think you guys should have been forwarded a letter that I received today from Avera of St. Benedict. I think you all got a copy? Did you all get, all right?
And it's in the packet?
Yeah, copy's in your pack if you had a chance to read that. Of course, they are encouraging the board to stay with the mask mandate. Is anybody having questions about the plan? Was it clear enough, Matt? Yeah? You know, the one I had, you know, I did say that, and we don't have a lot of concessions this time of year, but there are some, so I think we can eliminate those completely. Any kind of, you know, restrictions on what kind of concessions are served. Tried to think of everything else, but I'm sure we probably missed something somewhere.
All right, well, thank you for sharing that with us. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to our audience, to our visitors tonight. We can go ahead and, do you mind if we start with you, ma'am? If anyone has any inputs, we'll just kind of go around the room.
So band and chorus and all that can function as normal. We're not going to have stuff canceled because of, the CDC says it's we're too close and you can't sing. Because that's been a big thing in churches and everything else, is that they're saying, well, singing spreads it faster and all this, and so they don't allow that. And their numbers have dropped drastically hurting the structures themselves, the community groups. And I also don't think it's fair with, I want to make sure those other groups, besides basketball, besides wrestling, besides some of the sports, are getting a fair shake in this. Because they've already lost stuff before, these other ones have not.
So Christie, I was on the South Dakota High School Activities Association Task Force for all this stuff and trying to come up with plans for everything. And when they introduced the fact that they didn't want to have all-state choir and all-state band because of the exposure, there were two schools that spoke out against that. It was Brandon Valley and it was Parkston. And we said it wasn't fair that we could hold a state wrestling tournament one day, and the next week, we can't have an all-state band or choir festival. Unfortunately, we're in a minority. I mean, we spoke our minds, but that's all we got. They canceled them.
I'm just hoping that, because like, the FFA usually has a breakfast. Well, they had to scale back, and they did a thing for the teachers, vague stuff. I think that was totally wrong. And so that's the stuff that I'm looking at.
Is that something I decided to do?
Yes.
On their own?
It never got brought up to you.
That didn't come through the administration?
So, well, that's been piped to us that it came from administration.
It didn't.
But, I just want to make sure these other ones, because I've watched region basketball where we've had kids and there's been no masks in the youth section. And I just don't want, it should have been enforced, that's our policy, it should have been enforced at that game. And there was no mask watching that, and I don't want to see that continue for these other groups because they've been getting hammered on it. So I just don't want the double standard to fix that, and I want that to be known. I think this is a probably in a positive direction, especially for these little kids. They need to, that's a part of their learning is to be able to see in that. So I think with that, it's definitely a better step. I don't know if it's the right, you know, perfect step. I don't think masks, I mean, that's not, that's my personal opinion, but I think this is at least better.
Thank you. I appreciate your inputs. Yes, Mr. Yost?
Just a little, we do have our concerts, our band and chorus ones scheduled as normal. If numbers stay the same right now for our high school, so those are scheduled to go on.
Yep.
As planned.
Next week, right?
Our first one is next weekend, yes. Yep, so.
All right. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, Jen?
So according to the survey, we have 535 students. But only, so only, am I reading the survey that 125 families responded?
125. It's not the top. 110, 110 elementary parents, not families, parents. Forty-four junior high high school parents. And 50 who had parents of both in elementary and in junior high high school. So out of all the parents, there's only, this only represents about, not right around two lines.
I know the email that my husband, never showed up in my husband's. And I told, I sort of tried to find that look, and it was not able to get it, which so, and he gets everything else, so that's why I was kind of curious how that didn't show up because he gets them from school for everything else.
Because they're two different programs.
Yeah.
And if you canceled, what I talked to Survey Monkey, what I found on the Survey Monkey website was, is if you ever like, unsubscribe from something that was maybe a survey created by one of these 15 email list domains and all that stuff, you had to go into your domain and allow you to get those.
Couldn't nobody have this email just on like, you know, about the normal address?
No, you couldn't. Because that's a food service program.
I thought we had an email saying if we give that, then we'll be able to get the survey.
What about the school cancellation and is there any way to do it through a text or something like that? Because we always get school cancellations and stuff like that.
No, because they're just a notification service. It's not a survey service.
So that's probably the reason that you didn't have more numbers. Is that there could have been some glitches, just like a few that we're mentioning. So, and I did appreciate your return email back.
The people that responded to me or responded to the school, I sent it out to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Once I realized what the problem was.
Jen, did you have any other questions on the mask before we move on to the next?
No, I was just wondering how they actually fill it out because I personally did not get it on my phone either.
Okay.
But I get everything else from the school.
Do you have an avera.org email? Because those bounce.
I do, but I don't even know if it is. I don't want to pay attention to that.
All the avera ones.
Some email, yeah.
That's what we thought.
They bounce back because of their firewall.
This teacher's survey, is that the one from last month that you guys did for the teachers?
Nope.
No, we did that again.
That was new.
Ma'am, did you have?
You guys were saying that how many kids have had COVID and haven't had a case since, what, January?
I don't think we've had a student case since December.
December, so that's like three months?
Three months since the last student case. Yeah.
I'd like to know why we're the only school in the area that has mask mandate also. We go to a lot of other schools locally for basketball games, for young kids, our young son, and they don't have mask mandates. I would like to know why we are the only one around.
I can't answer why other schools don't have it. I know.
They don't seem to be having any major breakout.
What, who, why are we, or who, why are you, is this a report, or why are we? Why are we not lifting this?
Here's my deal. If you want to wear your mask, by all means, wear your mask. But don't shove it down my throat if I, if my face is somewhere else. If this, if I'm not wearing my mask, then if you're wearing it, if this is going to save your life, then it should save your life. Point blank. But don't cram it down our throats if we don't want to wear it.
JD, that surprises me, coming from a prior law enforcement. You know, when you hear when a policy is passed, even if it's a school policy where it's mandated, for you to go against it, it surprises me as a law-abiding citizen that you want to see the same value.
Policies are meant to be broken. I learned that the hard way.
You what?
Policies are meant to be broken because nobody follows them.
Hey, thanks JD. I appreciate your comments and input, though. Thanks for being here. Yes, Jen?
Well, we don't consider personal choices in our school.
Well, we don't consider personal choices in our school. 10 miles to each direction is personal choice.
I don't know what you mean by 10 miles to each person.
Ethan School, Tripp School is personal choice.
What's your point, Jen?
Why can't we have personal choice here in Parkston?
Exactly.
Are you saying you want to go to Ethan or Tripp?
I'm asking, why can't we have personal choice, is what I'm asking.
You did have personal choices. You could have taken the virtual option, or you could homeschool. Those are both personal choices.
I'm asking, why can't Parkston have personal choice on whether we wear a mask or not?
Anyone else?
I guess, why can't, we asked a question, and why can't it be answered?
I didn't know.
That's what we're here for, to discuss this, and if somebody asks a question, there should be an answer.
Okay, what's the question? I didn't understand the 10 miles each way.
10 miles from us, they got open choice whether they want to wear the mask or not.
Okay.
Either way, why is it we're dead center, in the middle, and we don't have open choice whether we want to wear it or not?
Well, I think that's been answered month after month. It's because we have a policy in place, because the board has made the decision that this was, we felt that it was in the best interest of both the parents, the teachers, and our students, to keep our kids in school. So, that's the answer.
But we're right in the middle of everybody else. Why is our, why is our school board so dead set on not giving the rights and freedoms back to people's personal choice?
Didn't we have a survey at the beginning of the school year also, that the majority of the parents said they didn't want masks, and the school board did not follow that?
No, they did follow it. They changed it later, though. To answer your question about the masks, you got to keep in mind that I wear a mask to protect you.
I'm fine.
I'm fine. You don't have to be.
That's fine, that's fine, but I need you to wear a mask to protect me. That's how, that's how masks work.
I've got an immune system, that'll work fine for me.
I can't make the science, it's just the way it works.
Science? You want to talk about science? The same people that are telling us we have to wear a mask are confused about gender.
This isn't a political issue for us, you know? Everybody wants.
Physicians are not confused about gender. There are physicians across the world who are saying this is the right thing to do. We are following science. There are like, 500 physicians to one physician who says, "Wear a mask." And you guys are believing the one. That's fine, you can believe that.
Well, I don't believe your statistics.
We're also just saying that all the other schools around us, without the mask mandates, their numbers just stay down.
That ought to be a good statistic.
So, I feel like.
We're the only one in the circle that's still wearing it, so we're the one statistic still without free choice.
Well, we are different size, so you got to look at that.
What's that?
Our spaces, where our kids are at, our, we have more kids in smaller space, okay? The next thing is, is it maybe didn't affect you, but at the beginning of the year, there were multiple kids who were sent home, because there were kids wearing masks and there were kids who weren't. According to the guidelines, those kids had to go home whether they were sick or not, whether they got sick or not. So, they were missing things, sitting at home, not ill. That's dumb. When we can have them sitting in a classroom, our goal here was to keep kids in school. Our goal was never to like, hurt anybody, make anybody feel bad, anybody have a bad day, that's not the goal. Why would we do that? Why as a board would we want to make it hard?
Because your fear around the kids, why is it my kids leaving the house and thinking, oh, if I don't have my mask, I'm going to die?
Nobody has ever said that. There is not bullying going on. This stuff has got to stop.
You're right, it does. We need to get back to normal, and before we can get back to it, we got to start happening.
No, there is not.
A kid tells a kid to put on a mask, if you're going to kill weed.
The bullying is on social media, right now, with the terrible things that are being said about people who are trying to do the right thing.
My son says he gets bullied by classmates in school.
Teachers cornering a single kid in a hallway, walking down a hallway, telling him he needs a mask on. There's nobody around.
If that happens, then you need to go and speak to the teacher or the principal. I can't change that what happened to them, I'm sorry that happened, I don't want that to happen to anybody. I don't want that for my kid.
Then give them free choice.
I don't want that for your kid.
Give them the choice, if they want to wear the mask, let them wear the mask.
Do you push your kid in the seatbelt when they get in the car?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is no different right now.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
It's way different.
No, it is not.
It's way different.
I just have a question.
Yes.
When all the quarantine and the spread of the COVID, in the beginning of the year, was that just because they were in the normal classroom, or was that sports-related?
You're asking, were all of the COVID cases sports-related?
When everybody left school and it's quarantined in the high school, was that just because the normal kid was in the classroom, or was that sports-related?
They didn't even believe that most of those interactions happened in school.
I'm just asking, was that sports-related, or was that just?
Most of them were school lunch-related.
When they got.
When they were sitting too close to each other at school lunch, and there was a positive case, those sitting around them for the 25 minutes of school lunch, they were put into quarantine then. So, I would say a majority of the kids identified were because of school lunch.
But then those close contacts that went into quarantine didn't get sick, did you not say that earlier?
Yeah, we had very few. I think there were just a couple that eventually we think was a student-to-student transmission.
That were in the.
Now, obviously, we can't prove that, but we don't think there was a lot of correlation there, but.
Kenzie, did you, either of you have?
I think you guys have a good plan, you know, set, or whatever you guys discussed. I think it's fair. It's nice to see that elementary end up at least, you know, I can only speak on that end, just because we have three of them. Just to give them a break, you know, since they're in their pods and their safe zone, and I think it's.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Regarding the colonies, was that lifted, I misunderstood the last meeting, I think.
No, I don't, no, I think all of, we're, every, the mask policy is the same for everyone.
Okay. I thought someone had said that you were considering lifting that at the colony.
No.
Okay.
Unless.
My misunderstanding.
Okay.
What about on the buses? My grandchildren ride on a bus over an hour with the mask on. They sit, I think they sit in the same seat, I think, or pretty close.
Well, close to each other.
Can you lift it off the bus?
No, I have to tell you, if anywhere it's got to be mandated, it is the bus. Those bus drivers are, I mean, I think my husband might be the youngest one, and he's in his 50s. And so, we have some really old bus drivers, and for their safety, they need to be protected. If you lose a bus driver, believe me, you don't have any extras. So, we just, we have to keep our bus drivers safe. I'm sorry, I know that that is their desire, and I can tell you firsthand, it is a need, because you don't have substitute bus drivers. That would really affect a lot of families if we couldn't dispatch a bus. So, unless Mr. Meyer comes back and says something for busing, that would still have to take place. I'm sorry.
And our buses are really full when they leave town.
They are, they are packed.
It's hard to socially distance. Now, once they get 10 miles out of town, then they're full.
Well, I was going to say, I live all the way east end. My kids are on the bus. By that time, I mean, you drop the ones off in town, and the first three stops, and it's down to five kids on the bus.
Yeah, and I'm sure if they're sitting in their seat, not visible, I'm sure, I mean, the bus driver's not walking back there, but I can tell you there is definitely a need there for those elderly folks. Yes, Dan?
I guess, more of a comment for me. My biggest thing is, I wish you guys, okay, going into this last fall, when the mask mandate came on, I had a conversation with Shane. I wasn't happy with it, nobody really was, but we had no facts. This was all news. We got out of school in March, we spent all summer, you know, kids were at home. We get to school, we were fine for a while, then things started breaking out. We had no facts on this. We didn't know if it was pneumonia, we didn't know if you were going to die from it, we had no idea. So, I was upset, I backed away, because I had nothing really to stand by. Okay, so we go through October, November, December. We heard of things all the time, people catching it, whatever. Okay, now we're into January, and we're knowing more and more and more about this. Things are starting to ease up. People are getting comfortable with their surroundings. You can see it when you go to the ballgames, wrestling matches, people are starting to realize this ain't a big deal. It's showing it on the statistics, outside of the state, in the state, and locally. So, really, all I ask you guys to do when you vote on this, pay attention to the facts. Don't let the fear take over. Don't turn off the TV, the radio, wherever you hear it, pay attention to what is happening right here. If you got a classroom that breaks, I would like to say, in a week from now, it could happen, you don't know. Do something about it. But as of right now, the facts are, the numbers are down. Let's adjust just as fast as we did when it came on last September. I really, really feel that was where we need to look at it.
Right. No, Dan, I agree with you, and thank you for your comments, and what would your recommendation be if there was a breakout? You know, like, if we had several cases?
I guess, probably operate the way you work.
Okay.
Either mask the classroom, mask the hallways, I guess, you just have to play it by ear, literally. You don't know if it's going to be in a group of kids, classroom, you really can't make a set of rules until it comes at you, because that's what the facts are.
Right. No, and I appreciate that, and I want everybody here to understand one thing, and I hear the frustration, and I've been hearing it, and I've been reading it on social media as well. I want you all to know, if you leave here with nothing else tonight, I want you to know that every member sitting at this table, our number-one concern are your children and our employees. That's it. This is not political. None of it. We made the decisions because we felt that they were the best decisions to make for your children, for our children, and for our employees. So, you know, everything else set aside, we're a team, I mean, we're a family. Heck, most of the people in Parkston are related. This isn't personal, so I appreciate you coming, and I appreciate your comments, I appreciate you being here. So, thank you. All right.
I'm glad the survey happened. I mean, up until now, in January, February, we had the girls here doing their part, trying to get this word out, and then seeing the survey that came on on Friday was actually the first chance, as you could hear what the whole town was saying. We don't have them resources to do that.
Right.
So, I appreciate that.
No, absolutely.
And it just, going forward, work with both sides.
Yeah.
You know, it sure seemed like it was one-sided the first half of the school season. I want to, I'd like to see it on both ends.
Yeah, no.
So.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else? Anyone over here? All right. Well, with that being said, we need to make a decision if we're going to adopt a new plan to remove the masks, as was presented by Mr. McIntosh. We asked them to put together a plan last board meeting, so that we had something to present and a plan for our staff to implement, or we need to decide if there'll be no changes to the current mandate as it stands. All right, so, let's go ahead and, do the board members have any input?
Close it for board discussion, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to close it, and we'll just do board discussion at this point.
I think the plan is written as good. I'm open to either option, the high school, I would probably lean toward six feet versus the best of their ability.
Okay.
I'm kind of in the same place as Ma.
All right. Jill?
I don't want to lift anything.
Okay. John?
I've got a few points here.
Yes.
If you can bear with me here a little bit.
Absolutely, thank you.
Shane mentioned that Avera sent out a letter to us again here recently, and I acknowledge what's been said by Shane, as well as the audience here, about the low spread rate that we've all experienced in here in Hutchinson County, and I think that's great, because something's been working, and that's the reason why we're at where we're at. Avera said here, too, that in addition to keeping our children and staff in school, the mask mandate affects our community at large. The school has the most people underneath one roof in our community on any given day, therefore, what happens at the school does matter in our community. I care about our community. The schools, it's been mentioned here tonight about schools, our size and higher have had a mask mandate and continue to have one, and it goes back to the distance that you can try and be in in a classroom. We just have more kids, and it's tougher to do. So, they're not doing anything different. Certainly, if we do have an outbreak, we could be having a situation where we have to send kids home, and then it involves parents that have to take off work and take care of kids. And for a lot of parents, in my opinion, that doesn't work very well financially. My goal, like Chairman Barge said a little bit ago, was to keep kids in school, keep teachers safe and teaching, and keep our community safe. So, I recognize tonight that there is a large majority, and the survey shows here, that the elementary kids' parents want the masks lifted, and I get that. I get that. However, I think the thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight, I haven't heard one word about that, is teachers. When we talk about safety of teachers, I had an email from a teacher, and I've been doing a lot of work this last month on trying to put the facts together, but here's, I won't mention who it is, but I'll just paraphrase it here, probably read a couple, three sentences, but she said she was writing this letter to let me know that I'm in favor of the mask mandate. What we are doing is helping. I don't want our numbers to go back up. I feel safer coming to work since we have the mandate. Before the mandate, I did not feel safe at work. So, we as board members here are their only buffer. Parents out here, we set policy here as a board. And we have teachers that are feeling safe today with the masks. Without that mask situation, according to this teacher, and if you look at the survey by teachers here, they said, "Do you support the school board continuing with the mask mandates with, that are currently in place?" 70% of the teachers said yes. When you talked about the elementary teachers, probably a little more lenient, probably more of a 50-50, but if you look at the high school teachers, 70% of the teachers in high school want a mask mandate. Period. So, so again, as a board member, I have to not only look at for the welfare of the kids, but the welfare of the teachers. We're the ones that are trying to protect them. As you know, if you know me at all, I've been around this community for a few years, and I honestly care about this community. I've served on numerous boards, I have given financially to a lot of different causes, and I continue with the daycare center that went defunct. I'm also serving on that board to try and help the community to get kids where they can stay. So, I tried to look at the different factions here, because in my opinion, we got about five different, five different areas here. So, we look at Avera, Avera says, "Keep wearing masks." High school parents, based on what I'm seeing here, are leaning toward still wearing the masks. Teachers are still wanting some masks. They don't feel comfortable. Number four, elementary parents, they're here tonight, and they're wanting, quite frankly, I think, the mandate to get lifted all the way through the school. And the other thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is vaccines. I think that we have a possibility of, what, in the next week or two?
Monday.
Monday?
A week from today, they get vaccinated.
And that would make me feel a whole lot better, too, or have more, have a comfort zone. So, I want to thank the board here for all the due diligence. I think we've kept the bar pretty high here, considering a lot of the comments that I've heard and received personally, and again, I think it shows our character here as a board. So, at this point in time, again, those five factors that I talked about, they're all pointing in one direction, saying, "Let's keep it in place here for the moment," except for the elementary parents. And so, I think we continue on, as is.
All right. Thank you, John. All right, well, it's going to come down to me, I see. I want to say a few things before I render my decision. First, I want to say, there have been some disappointing comments. there have been some disappointing comments put out on social media. And for those, I am disappointed. We are all volunteers in this position. And I think we do the very best that we can. So, you know, going forward, I would just ask that you put yourself in someone else's position when you are putting stuff out for the world to see. The comments brought up, both by our fam, our, our parents and our board, are all very well received. We've been hearing the same thing month after month after month. I am going to vote to remove, to ma, to remove the masks with restrictions. I want to see our elementary mask-free in the classrooms. I want them to wear them when they're mixing outside of the class. Definitely when they are on the buses, and I'm sorry. But that's necessary. Our high school, it is a greater concern. And the, my thought process is, is our kids are not social distancing outside of the school. We all know that. We see it. Statistically, it appears that the spread is a lot lower in the lower elementary grades than it is in the high school. I don't want to see activities and classes shut down. I, I don't, you know, want to, I don't want to see parents having to keep kids home and homeschool. I would like to see the high school stay in a mask mandate. If the teachers deem that it's not necessary in their classroom, I would like to leave it up to them. We do have some teachers that have spouses that have underlying health conditions, as well as elderly parents that they're taking care of. And I really think it would be in everyone's best interest if we take our employees into consideration as well. So, if they're with a teacher that feels comfortable in that class to allow that student to remove it, then they won't necessarily have to wear it all day long. Again, when they're walking through the hallways, they should wear it. And when they're riding buses, they should also wear it. That would be my recommendation. I know it's not everything that you guys are asking for and that everything that you want, but it gives us a little bit of leeway and it starts moving us in the right direction. So, my vote would be two.
Is that the pla, I don't know if that's the plan. Is that the plan?
Not specific.
Matt, you're the smartest one, maybe tell us.
Not the way I read it though.
Yeah.
Right, so we need to talk about it.
So, you basically said you wanted to keep, leave it up to the teacher in high school.
Right, I want to make it a man, they, they need to wear them unless they're in the classroom and the teacher tells them that they can take it down. We, I want to make it teacher-based in the classroom. Otherwise, they'll be in a mask in the high school.
May I make comment?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think your teachers would have some control over, you know, by this plan, they would have some control over that, some. And that would be on how they would arrange students in their classrooms.
Right.
And if they're unable to social distance the closer to the teacher, then they'd have to be masked. On that, they keep the back of the classroom open, give some room, and the kids could, could take masks off. I don't know if they'd want to rotate or not. But, you know, I asked my son this weekend about some of those things. And, and you know, quite frankly, he'll wear a mask. He doesn't care.
Yeah.
But a lot of his classes, you know, he's a senior. He's got classes where there's only, you know, there's only six in physics. Well, they can social distance in there. That's not going to be an issue. It's going to be where you get into classes like government and English, where you get all of them together at one time, where you're going to have some limitations in being able to social distance, especially with your older ones. You get down to the junior high age, it gets a little tougher because a lot of those classes are together. So, then we would need our teachers to be more creative in how they could provide students with some opportunities to, to take masks off. And, and what that looks like, I, you know, I'd have to leave that up to the teachers. But having class outdoors is an example, once the weather's right. You know, separating and rotating students, I, I don't know. They'd have to figure it out themselves, but.
So, if I can make a suggestion here, why, why don't we go with what's printed here? If, as far as the plan? And if, if, trust me, by next month, we're going to know how well it goes over. And if there's some concerns, I'm sure we'll get people coming back next month that can help us maybe fine-tune it a little bit more, would be my suggestion.
I'm fine with it. And basically, just to kind of sum it up, how would we sum that up to the parents? I know you kind of went over some of it. But elementary, they can remove their masks in their classroom?
Yeah, so if, as long as they're in that, and I call them pods, you can call it their class or classroom. Just take any, you know, a third grade classroom. Those kids that are in that one classroom, once they get into the classroom and they're with their teacher, they can remove their masks. Now, if a teacher wants to call them forward and they're within, you know, there's three or four of them around a little kidney table and they're talking right at them and the teacher wants them to put a mask on at that point, I think the teacher should have the right to ask that question. But then when they're back, they can remove their masks. On the other hand, we've got, we've got teachers who need them to take their masks off. And I think those teachers should be allowed to do that as well. You know, they know what they're getting into at that stage. So, again, that's a, that's going to be the teacher's choice. But language development, being able to articulate properly and, and enunciate words properly
Thank you.
is critical. And our biggest proponent of that is sitting behind me. And she does a wonderful job at that. So, give her all the tools she can to be as successful as possible.
So, they're wearing a mask outside of the classroom?
So, they, then, so they, they're leaving, they're going, they're going to lunch, they're going to PE, they're going to vocal music, wherever. They're in the hall, they're going to have their mask on as they go because they, there's going to be interactions with other, other students. But you're only talking minutes a day and not, not hours. So, I think it's a compromise that, that I feel comfortable with. We can limit those groups. And if we see an outbreak in a class, we can act. And it might be, it might be sending them all home at some point. I don't know. We'll have to see how things unfold.
And then in the high?
But if you get two or three or four kids in the same classroom who test positive, it's probably because they're spread in that classroom.
Right.
You know, we're going to try it without, by just masking. And that was, that idea came from Matt, and I think it's a good one. But, you know, I think if you see enough cases show up in one classroom, then it's, it's a real indication there's probably a problem in that classroom.
And the high school, sir?
So, the high school would look, what we want to try to do there is create social distance opportunities for the kids so they can remove their masks for periods of times. Again, the attitudes are a little bit different because, and, and I don't know why. I assume it's because they, they recognize what's that consequence if they end up having to go into quarantine or go home. They, they miss some of the things they love doing, whether it's FFA or whatever. And they don't want to do that. So, we, we give them opportunities to social distance when possible. But if they're unable to do that, then they, then they wear their masks. That's what the plan says. And we're using six feet versus the best of their ability.
There was a, the masks will be worn when singing is listed in there?
Yeah, so one of the questions Mr. Pearl asked last month was, "How are we going to handle that?" And it may seem foolish that we haven't wore masks when they're singing, but that's probably when they're expelling the most aerosols and droplets is when they're really, you know, belting things out. So, while it's certainly not a great situation for those, those kids, it does still provide them the opportunity to sing. And in the elementary especially, in band, those classes are held at the end of the day. So, we think we can put and run air, our air scrubbers after each of those and we can run those all night. So, that would be taken care of in that capacity. It's, it's not perfect. I know that. But it's the best we've got right now.
So, are we going to post this somewhere, Shane, for the community or the?
Well, what I would, I guess what I would ask if the board is going to go with this, give us a day. You know, make it effective on Wednesday. That way, we can get, we can, we can get everything organized for teachers. We can get parents notified properly and let everyone know what's going on. Otherwise, trying to do it first thing tomorrow, it's going to be a mess.
Sure. So, what do you think you'd like to have for your staff? A week? Four days? The next week, Monday?
Wednesday soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can give us one day.
Yeah.
He can do by Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Shane, would, I just want one clarification if, on the contact. So, if someone does test positive, how is that going to work with mask versus one? If one is masked, the other one isn't, or?
So, right now, one of the benefits of the, the method we're using right now is if, if two students are together, one's positive and the other one's negative, but they're both masked, we're still allowing the, the masked, close contact to attend school. I think that would still pertain if they were both masked. If they're not masked, I don't remember what I wrote. You guys remember?
If they're close contact, they have to be masked and then we monitor.
Mandatory mask and monitored, yeah.
Yeah.
But if additional cases came up, there'd be.
Then, then we got the court.
Court judge.
Right.
Can I do something?
Yes, Dan. Yeah, can we, let's let Jen go first because she did have her hand up for a while.
I, I do want to say Tri Valley is twice the size of school as us and they have no mask mandate. Second, I want to ask if the teacher does want the kid to wear a mask and he goes out to the hallway to go to the bathroom and takes his mask on, is he going to get yelled by a teacher to mask up when there's nobody in the hallway except for himself and another teacher?
Well, that would be yes because the mandate is, is that if you're in the hallway, you have a mask on.
The reason why he went too fast to go to the bathroom was to get a breathing break.
Okay, so if he's in the bathroom, no one's probably going to go in after him. But, you know, this isn't foolproof, Jen, and I, I get where you're going. I, I hear the sarcasm in your voice with the questions. And I get it. You're frustrated. And I know you have a son that falls into this category. But we have a policy in place because we can't pick and choose every single thing we do. But the simple answer is, is yes. You know, if they're in a classroom and the teacher has them distanced and is allowing them to take their masks off for whatever, you know, their situation is, when they go into the hallway, the, the policy is, is that you have a mask on. It's no different than the policy that we've had in place at ballgames, at sporting activities. And people just take it upon themselves not to wear a mask, even though we have a policy in place. We can't continue to operate that way. We've got to just, we have to tell our kids what's expected of them and expect them to follow it, whether we like it or not. It's no different than following the laws or the rules. I know it's not what you like. It's not political. Get it out of your head. It's not political. These masks have done a lot for the community. A lot more than just protecting COVID, whether you believe it or not. But we, we haven't had any influenza. We don't have the sick kids that we always have. I mean, whether you believe that it's working or not, something is definitely different. Whether it's the mask or not, it's not hurt them. So, back to your question, Jen. It's a great question. Thank you for asking. But the answer would be yes. If they're in the hallway.
If they have to wear a mask, but nobody else is in the hallway except for him and another teacher, that is at least six feet away.
Yes. And we don't want to put students in situations where they have to make determinations whether or not. So, the flat, easy rule is if you're in the hall, you wear it. Otherwise, you're going to have students trying to make a decision whether they should have it on or have it. And then that's just going to create more of a mess.
Yes, thank you for summing that up.
I think it's a good compromise to, I mean, the, the time is minimal.
Dan, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, you know, when you make the rules and you got the guidelines, it, it just seems like there's a lot of overthinking because of it. You know, if you're beside somebody that was masked and they coughed on you or they were around them for too long. Or, I get the hallway thing. I get that. You, you got classrooms walking by each other. I understand that. But it's going to get to a point where we got to rely on other people just to use common sense. If you don't feel good, stay home. Okay, if you're going to mask.
Hallelujah.
I mean, so I don't understand. I, I, I listened to your, what you're reading and I'm just, the time to get to the third sentence, I'm just already lost. You know, so I guess my, I'm just asking, just, it just sounds like it's very, very drawn out, overthought. Keep it simple. Use common sense.
Dan, you are so right. And being on the board for eight years as I've been, I thought exactly that same way. But until you sit on this board and you are approached on five different directions from people asking questions, like, "Does my kid have to wear a mask in the hallway if nobody else is there?" When that's the policy. And, and it's valid because that's how people think. But you have to spell everything out for, for, for everybody. And you're right, we sit here so many times and we say, "Oh, my God, we are overthinking it." But you have to cover every possible direction.
And like having the high school where, but not have the grade school. I mean, I, I find that to be overthought process. And what, what makes you guys think what you're going to save by having the high school that's wearing masks? Because it's all they have to do is block out that door. I see it. And they're congregating around their vehicles, having a conversation with no mask. So, you got to remember what the kids are even doing outside of the school. So, you can try hard on this end of the school, but I don't really think you're gaining much, in my opinion, I guess.
Right.
But, but we have liability.
Yep, I agree.
So, you have somebody in here that has COVID and they can prove that they caught the COVID here.
How is that possible? You can't.
If the high school is congregating already that night.
If they got tests that they do here and it was shown. I don't know where they caught it. The point is that if they've got it here and they're in a classroom setting and they can spread it.
This stuff that's spread all over the place, it's on the gas.
We're going to be included.
It's all over money. It's all over.
Well, thank you for letting me talk here, okay?
You're welcome.
JD, that's where the hand washing and, 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 what do you call?
Ninety percent of the time, if anybody's got this on, they're doing this. They're picking at it. They're, they're, it's, it's all over. You're, you're, it's, it's pointless.
Yeah, we're just trying to do the best we can, JD. At least we're wearing the mask. You can't even keep yours on tonight.
I can't. I, I can't wear anything. When the good Lord greeted me, I came out of my mom without a mask on and then I'm blown out.
Well, you were naked too, but you, you seemed to be able to put clothes on.
Well, I'm sure you, I'm sure you won't be here naked tonight. I'm just telling you.
Just remember you're on camera.
Clothes are stained.
Please, you guys do the plans or whatever you guys do. Are you going to, how are you going to do the colony or how are you going to tie them in? You know, like if elementary shifts, are you going to lift it from the colony? Are you going to keep them, let them choose?
I, I think we, I think we would approach all schools the same way. So, you know, in the, the colony, it's a little different. You know, you're not going to say a class because it's, you might have one first grader. It would be a classroom there, all the students in Mrs. Leishner's classroom. Our home, that, we operate just a little bit different there because they have their own set of rules. We would apply this, but if they want to overrule us and say they need to wear masks, then they'll wear masks. And I suspect that's what they'll do, but I don't know that.
And our teachers will have to continue to wear masks, which is no different than what most of our employers do currently, so. Yes, Dan?
Like parent involvement, I remember, you know, like last year, teachers would let you ask them to come in to help with activities or even eat dinner with your child at lunch. Is that ever going to change or is it?
Probably not this year, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, I, I really don't. And I think if the board had it the way they really wanted it, we'd probably finish the year in all masks. But we realize that we need to give this a chance. And I hope as well as you do, that everything goes smooth and we finish the year just as we are right now. Okay? But no, I don't foresee it changing.
Yeah, I will say, you know, we'll be holding some events at the end of the year, like elementary-wise, that will be outdoors.
What are we going to do for activities?
We allow, you know, do at least be a part of the, the end of the year.
Well, that's a good question. I, I, if you can't social distance, you need a mask. I, if you can't social distance, you need a mask. That's what I've written, unless you're a participant.
Okay, so activities would be as it is now. If you can't social distance, then you need to be in a mask. Okay?
For outdoor activities like track meets, it's just, it's just going to be recommended.
Yeah, that's open air, and I agree. Have we covered everything? You guys?
We'll find something we didn't.
We will. I want to, again, just thank you, thank you for coming. We do appreciate your input. It matters to us. I know you don't feel like your voice is always heard, but I promise you it is.
You'll need to vote yet on this.
Yep, and we're going to vote, finish this off, but please continue to come, even when we're not talking about mask mandates, because it's always good to have parent input. JD, you can come, too. Okay?
Close on.
Yeah, keep, close on. All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote to adopt the mask mandate policy as presented in our handout tonight.
With six feet or with...
Six feet.
With six feet. All right?
I'll move, though. One second.
Moved by Leishner, second by Mahoney, to approve the mask removal plan as presented by Mr. McIntosh, that allows students to have a relief from masks when, when they can provide six feet of social distancing.
I think just...
Do I need to list all of the...
No, I think just...
Or do I just put removal plan?
As presented, yeah. But I, I, could you add, starting Wednesday?
You bet.
Please.
Monday's today, Monday, so we're going to do it Wednesday this week?
Yep, Wednesday this week. We just need a day to get organized.
Okay.
So I got them to approve mask removal plan as presented by Mr. McIntosh, begin on Wednesday, March 10. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign?
Aye.
Motion carried, three to two.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to the second reading of our, pretty much our sexual harassment policy, right?
Yes, Title IX, but yeah.
Title IX.
Sexual harassment, however you want to perceive it. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
You know, there weren't a lot of changes from the first reading. We did, we did amend a few things, a lot of formatting errors and a few things like that, but in terms of context of, of what the policy says, there really were no changes. Couple of references of policy numbers that were changed, but other than that, that was the extent of it.
All right, with the, being the final draft, we need a motion to approve? Or no?
Is this, I'm not, that's one second.
What says you will find, oh, find a draft? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll have one more reading next.
We'll have one more reading next month. All right, next is the Tri Delmont consolidation email.
All right, so, where's that at? So President McKean received an email from the Tri Delmont School District, and you all received a copy. You know, they talk about their strategic planning and their upcoming opt-out and inquiry as to whether or not the school district still has interest in having consolidation talks, pursuing ideas, asking kind of to think out of the box on things. So we got this, and your response is also in, in the packet on behalf of the board. And then the response that we got back again was, maybe there was a little confusion because there wasn't an urgent need to reply. I, I guess I sensed there was, so I certainly may be at fault in feeling that way. But, but in any case, you know, I, I think it's difficult to identify, it's, it's hard to talk about unique ideas when we don't know what they're, what topic we're looking at. So I, I think it's just critical that you, you're just going to need to sit down and have those conversations, and, you know, what, what are expectations would they have? What expectations would you have? And just, you're just going to have to have, have conversations rather than try to do something via email, I believe. Now, if you feel differently, by all means, you should, should let us know so we can share that with the Tri Delmont School Board.
I think their opt-out comes up next year, isn't it?
Yes, they indicated that when talking to me.
Yeah, that's what I got from my...
So, yeah, yeah, so I, you know, I think they're, they're planning, which they obviously need to do.
And they're reaching out to many schools.
Yes.
Yeah, I know that for a fact.
So I guess, you know, what I would recommend was, you know, just letting them know, like we already have, that we're, you're open to having those conversations, but until we know what topics we're, you know, I, without knowing what the question is, it's hard to answer it. So we kind of need to know what they're thinking in order to give them unique ideas and, and thoughts on what ways things could work if, if it came to that, so... Do you guys think any differently?
I think we owe it to their school, our school, and our combined patrons to do the best we can. I think we could collaborate in some form to benefit both parties, and I think we at least need to discuss it.
Well, I can certainly write another piece of correspondence and let them know that there's a lot of interest, and until we know what the questions are, it's hard to answer, so a meeting would be probably most appropriate.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you, Shane. Does anyone have any other questions on this issue before we move on?
Yeah, I, I just think there's a lot of uncertainty on their part if the opt-out's going to pass this time of year.
And a lot of uncertainty.
Uncertainty on their part, so I think they're just trying to do some...
Right.
...planning, which I would do.
Absolutely. All right, next is the under-action items and to approve claims. We have two that had conflicts of interest with myself, and that is with BJ Bussing for $26,877.49, and the city of Parkston, which is $1,298.65. I need a motion to approve?
So much.
Moved by Mahoney, second by Leishner, chief of the local, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
With McKean and McKee.
With McKean and McKee. Next, we had a tabled item, which was a makeup day for the school board calendar. I'd like to almost just kick it down the road another month.
That would be my recommendation, too. At this point, you know, we talked about snow on Wednesday, and they told me before the meeting that they've moved the band north a little bit, so who knows? It could be as early as this week, so...
Yep, and with lifting the mask, you never know.
Yeah.
So, so we need a motion to kick it down the road? No?
It's already tabled, so you don't need to...
You need to still remove it from the table? If that's all right with the rest of the...
Yeah, that's perfect. Is good with everyone? Yep, all right. So next, we will need to go into executive session, so it is now 7:48, so we'll go recess?
That got struck, yep. Oh, that got struck.
So we'll resume in five minutes.